Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna get started and get going. So, here's, if you would like to talk to council, I would like you to fill out a form and bring it up. Once we get into the issue that we may or may not be talking about, it's almost gonna be too late. And I don't want people just walking up there and talking and waiting in line to talk. I don't want that. So, fill out a form, bring it up here, you can bring it up anytime, and then, but once we're done or on that topic, we're done. Just trying to get some order here, okay?
Once the topic is addressed by the council, then no more forms.
Yeah, if you've come here to talk on a topic and you want to talk, fill out the form right now, bring it up, we don't care, walk up here and hand it to us, but once we start talking, I don't want to be interrupted, okay? If you've come here for a purpose and you want to talk to us about something, please, now, the other city council meeting, you have 15 minutes, you can talk about anything. But please, fill out a form, because you've obviously come here to say something, if you did, then fill out the form, bring it up here, and we'll get you on and you can talk, okay? And you can bring it up anytime. Okay, um, would you, go ahead and call roll.
This is for the special council meeting, the city council posted for 5:00 PM. Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Arquez.
Present.
Councilmember Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Dorito.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
All present.
Okay. We have, we had a revised agenda, we have two proclamations. One is for Canyon City, City of Canyon City Drinking Water Week, and would you want me to read that proclamation or just declare it? It's for May 6th, pardon?
Are we gonna do the pledge of allegiance? You have it on the agenda.
Oh.
Yeah.
Alright, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please, rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I may be meeting from this week especially from meeting shock, so thank you for doing that. Okay, so we have two, we have Canyon, City of Canyon City Drinking Water Week, and I can read that proclamation, or it will be available for my, it is, I've signed it, it's for May 6th through the 12th, and it's the City of Canyon City Drinking Water Week. Thank you. And I'd hand it around, you can read it if you like, or I will read it. Would you like me to read it, Mr., would you? Okay, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. Whereas the health, safety, and well-being of all Coloradans are of utmost importance to propriety and livelihood of our state's families and communities, and whereas Colorado's streams, lakes, rivers, watersheds, and other clean water sources must be protected to maintain the good health of our citizens, wildlife, and fisheries, and whereas protecting Colorado's national, natural water supply and other natural resources is critical to the preservation of our environment for future generations of Coloradans, and whereas elected officials at each level of government, as well as businesses and citizens throughout our state, are responsible for ensuring that all Coloradans have access to clean drinking water, and whereas it is the duty of all Coloradans to preserve our supply of clean drinking water for more, for future generations, and obey laws which protect Colorado's water supply for our use and the Colorado diverse ecosystem. Now hereby, I, Preston Troutman, Mayor, do proclaim May 6th, 2012, 2018, as Canyon City Water, Canyon, City of Canyon City Drinking Water Week. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hartzman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council members and city staff. The Canyon City Water Department, in conjunction with National Drinking Water Week, which as the mayor stated, begins May 6th through the 12th this year, invites you to join us in commemorating 146 years of service to Canyon City's public health. As part of National Drinking Water Week, the city water department is recognizing the generation of Canyon City residents who ensured that our community had an ample supply of safe drinking water. When you stop and think about it, the need for a safe supply of drinking water really can't be overestimated. Clean water is essential to our lives, to our lives and lifestyles every single day. We will be kicking off National Drinking Water Week celebration by participating in the Blossom Day festivities. We will be setting up a water booth at 9th and Main along the parade route. We will provide to all a fresh, cool, clean cup of water that we proudly produce. After all, what better way to prove as what we operators boast about as serving the best water in the state of Colorado? We also invite each and every one of you to join us at the Canyon City Water Treatment Plant located at 103 Tunnel Drive on Friday, May 11th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM for informative tours about our facility. Tours will begin at the top of each hour. This invitation has also been extended to our citizens as well. The staff and I are grateful to you for your support in the job that we do. The staff takes their job very seriously and is proud of the water that they produce and distribute. We are honored to provide a service to the community that we live in, and we hope to see you along the parade route or at the water treatment plant for a tour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzman.
Thank you.
What was the date of that tour?
The 11th, May 11th.
May 11th, it's a Friday.
And did you tell your official position in our town?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the water superintendent.
Okay, thank you. That, I've been up there several times, I'm very impressed with it. It is amazing to me what it takes to go from river water to drinking water. If you've not been up there, go ahead, go up there and look, it's a wonderful facility and we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Okay, second proclamation is National Small Business Week, would you like me to read that one as well? Is anyone here representing National Small Business Week?
We do have some small business owners here.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Ryan Stevens, Economic Development Director for the city. And National Small Business Week, it's Canyon City rural areas, small businesses make up the backbone of our communities, and I would like to challenge council and the citizens of Canyon City to go and patronize our small businesses, enjoy the wares that they have to offer and the services that they have to offer, and, you know, stop in on Main Street and visit, visit the restaurants, visit the shops, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Would you care, Ryan, would you like me to read this?
I don't think you need to read it.
Oh, thank you. I would stumble through this one, too.
Let Ryan read it.
Okay. Oh, excuse me, there, Mr. Dorito, there was a, an item that somehow got disappeared off the previous agenda, did you still want to address something about building permits?
Um, I had, in order to keep things brief, I had written up a brief statement.
Okay.
I don't know if now's an appropriate time, but I would like, I prepared it in hopes of...
Is that something you're gonna hand out to council?
Um, I didn't make copies, but I can afterwards if they'd like.
Would that be your pleasure?
What's that?
Would that be your pleasure to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
How long's it gonna take him to read it?
About four and a half minutes.
So...
If, I can...
Well, I'm a little concerned, because it's not in the discussion item on the agenda, so I'm wondering if maybe it should be set on a different agenda?
It was on the first meeting.
It was on the first...
Oh, it was in the vision committee meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Okay, you would prefer just hand it out and let council read it?
I would prefer he read it, he's got something public.
Okay, I can do, I can do both if you'd like.
It was council's pleasure.
It's his option.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dorito.
Fellow members of the council and staff, while I am new to the process of being a member of council, I'm not new to the process of commercial remodel, staff and organizational hurdles, as well as business protocol. I've repeatedly discussed the struggling cultural issue I feel we need to address in regards to commercial growth in our community. Larger issues are coming down the pipe, like it or not, surrounding potential funding shortfalls in our fire district, added expenses in our stormwater issues, consumer feedback pointing to a need for more commercial opportunity, both in the form of employment as well as shopping, yearly budget requests that are not unfamiliar to those in the city, with infinite need while only having finite resources. The mountainous terrain set before us, while not placed by our hand, is nonetheless one we must each face and climb together. We must know and admit our inabilities, we cannot change the state statutes, we cannot change the federal requirements placed upon us, and we cannot alter the decisions of our predecessors that created the environment. What we can do is this, we can recognize and face these hurdles head-on. We are not looking to place blame, seek responsible parties, but we together must both as citizens and civil servants find solutions to these problems. Most of these solutions can on a local level address the issue through increasing tax revenue through commercial and residential expansion and growth. More specifically, it is no secret that sales tax makes our fiscal world go round, so while we all agree that being more business friendly is our end goal, what is unknown is how we get there. I've researched several, and, different entities, and I've had several conversations regarding use tax with other municipalities. While this is a good concept of shop local, it's unpopular to contractors due to the heavy upfront cost to the builder. I was told directly through different municipalities at Salida and Jefferson County, they do not employ use tax. I was informed in Aurora, Colorado, that they do not use means average book due to its overestimation. They also told me, told me they utilize trust, estimation, and contract amounts to figure use tax, so as to improve contractor relations, thus improving the chance of future projects. So, in their mind, rather than concentrate on the minor dollar income that may be gained by arguing with the contractor over use tax, they improve the chance of future, future expansion and growth. Cortez also utilizes build sheets and contract invoices on pre-engineered buildings as they found the means average and overestimation of these, these pre-manufactured products. We also have had two, two heated discussions recently regarding access and placement for water use in commercial projects, not in the arena of getting more specifically, or quality levels, but simply the placement of these taps and access. A small business has needed and reached out for guidance and aid in navigating code-intensive waters of commercial remodel, and while it is at the end of the day their job to take care of their education, very few are both qualified and have the resources to understand commercial IBC requirements, so aid and compassion are welcome at least. Each of these incidents, while unfortunate, affords the opportunity of employing a future-satisfied customer ready to invest cash again into our community if handled properly. My point is this, we have fantastic staff, but the skills of the staff are only as strong as the guidance they are given by their leadership. We are their leadership, and we have agreed that we need, want, and have a common goal to become more business friendly. Change is hard, but losing ground because we are not able to properly guide and direct our extremely capable staff would be a tragedy. They each, just as we as independent council members, bring skill and experience to the table, so what I am suggesting is this, clearly write out goals, setting a new standard for workability and business-friendly growth that is both advantageous and safe to the community, hold ourselves and our staff accountable for the experience that our constituents have in their business dealings, and this may include training and focus emphasis on customer service as well as follow-up questionnaires, and we need to improve our lines of communication so that as incidents arise, we address them fairly and promptly so they do not fester into discontent and damage for future relations. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
Is that an item that we can put on a future agenda?
I think that there's...
Are you gonna get a copy of that to all the council?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. If you wish to do that, let us know as soon as you can.
Okay.
And add to an item, okay?
Well, I, Mayor, I think that we've talked a lot of time about having, getting, moving forward with being more business friendly, and maybe we need to have a vision committee geared around that.
We can do that, next vision, you wanna...
I, I think one of the things we need to concentrate on is finding a mechanism to deal with, we run into these headaches because we have a somewhat unique situation that conflicts with current, if you want to call it code. If we could devise a mechanism as to how we could handle some of those specialties, I think that would be a drastic step, and I, we got black and white, we need to find some gray, or a mechanism so that we're consistent with how we get to the gray, and I'm not sure what that is, but if we could do that, that would make a huge difference.
Yeah, we have a lot of unique instances that come up, and it doesn't always fit in that black and white. We need to have a little bit of gray area, and...
And I don't know how we do that.
Just, I mean, just briefly, I don't want to get into it, because we have a, we have other agenda items, however, I can tell you that most of these are centered around local small businesses trying to kind of get their foot in the door, so to speak. Big box stores don't have quite the same hurdles, because, you know, they have a, they have a team that handles this. How we open our lines of communication, how we handle these promptly, I think, really is reflective of us as a council to be just reactive to these, these small business needs, because time is money. And a lot of them have very finite monetary resources, so I'm not proposing any action tonight, but I do think it's something we need as a council to contemplate future, future addressing of.
It's gonna take a lot of discussion, not just one.
Okay. I would like all of you to be able to send me a comment, I hope it's legal.
The only comment I have...
Individually? It's not legal, well, there we go, we can't talk to each other, good for us.
We have a forum scheduled.
What we, what, do you have a forum scheduled, when's that?
May the 9th.
Who is that with?
Forum, the council, talk about the business service process.
Are we gonna invite some contractors and people?
Yes.
How are we doing that?
Like we did last time.
How did we do the last time?
We reach out through email, and, and letters, and social media.
Okay.
I think Frank had some.
Mr. Arquez?
The only thing I want to say is, what Greg said, there's, we sometimes tend to be the reason why we drag things out. He's got a good point about, you know, us being responsible, you know, to the citizens, the staff, and everything else, and so, we need to look at when we do whatever we do, that we're not the ones that are dragging it out, you know, let's look at it realistically, the way we need to look at it regardless of whether it's for the small business or anything else, and then try to resolve it as quickly as possible, and, you know, not continue week after week, month after one, and I agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
Let's go forward.
Okay.
Alright, one of the, step number two on this was the order 2A Street Improvement Project 218 to Kiwit and A&amp;S Partnership. Apparently, that's not gonna happen, so I'm not sure, that is a point that we need to discuss. However, if you've come here with that expectation and you have signed up, then I would like to have you come to the microphone. Now, are you talk, Ms. Kesar, is she here? Thank you. When you're talking about, you said 2A bid 2018, or you want to talk about a point that is, is not its moot point, or do you want to talk about Resolution 5 of 2018?
Well, first of all, thank you for giving me my three minutes, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. My name is Nancy Kesar, and I live at 1310 Constitution in Canyon City. I'm a proud citizen of Canyon City. I came here seven years ago, thinking I was going to be here a year, and I fell in love with the community, absolutely fell in love with it, and decided to start a business I felt there was a need for. And what I'd like to address today is, I first of all want to say, each and every one of you is intelligent and articulate, and I can tell that you too care about this community. You have voiced, each and every one of you today, your concern for what is right for the citizens of Canyon City, and all I would like to say on this topic is that when I saw what was on the agenda, I was here at the last meeting where this was highly discussed, and I felt that the, the local citizens had great points, and I did not need to step forward and speak, but I'm a slow thinker, I think deeply, and since that meeting, several points that I thought of, I would like to address to you as you take all of these matters into your consideration, and that is just what you spoke of tonight, your concern for your citizens, your standing up for what's right for them, looking out for the citizens, looking out for the money. I serve about eight to 10 hours a day, six days a week, your same people. I see hundreds of people a week come through the doors of my store and look for quality product at a fair price, which we try to offer, and I can assure you that every single dollar that they spend, they spend carefully, they spend very carefully, they think it through, they're going to want to make absolute sure that we do the same when we make decisions of who's going to fix our roads and who's gonna work for us. That taxpayers' dollar that we collect, that we bring down here, the 20th of every month, and yes, I usually slide in at about 2:00 the 20th with my sales tax submission, but it's a sizable amount of money that we work very hard to collect from your citizens for the projects of this community, and I would like to see that money spent extremely responsibly, and I would like you also to consider the tremendous residual effects of all of the people that are employed locally to do this project, and how that money will just continue to circulate through. And this is a community I love, all God's children have a place in the choir, mine is to do what I do, yours is to do what you do, and I'm placing my trust that the decision will be, will be considered properly for the best of the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kesar.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Do we know how to run the clock? Usually it goes on at 3:00 and goes down to 0:00.
There you go, 2:54. 2:59.
Our clerk is new, so we must be patient here. We are both at that time in our life when we are challenged electronically, so I'll need my 14-year-old son here to do this. We're set, okay.
She's got it.
She's got it, thank you. Okay, the next on the agenda here is Mr. Paul Fisher, would you step forward? And you want to talk about number two and number three. Again, number two is gonna not be discussed, but you wish to, go ahead, you got three minutes.
Again, Paul Fisher, 299 Savitch Loop, Canyon City. Number two is a moot issue, I won't even address that. Number three, I only want to say, without hearing any discussion from, on the part of council, that in my career, I have built over $100 million worth of projects, and I never use design-build. The largest project was $20 million. I built a membrane filtration plant for water, and we use the process that you're talking about, where you design it, you bid it, and then you build it, and I'm very much in favor of that, and I'm glad you're headed in this direction, and I fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you.
You have two minutes left.
Turn it off. Push it off the edge.
Okay, we're gonna, there we go, okay. The next one is John P. Ari. Would you step forward, please, Mr. Ari?
So, Preston, I wasn't sure of the format, really signed up because I kind of took it you wanted us signing up prior to the conversation you have, I'm not sure what comment I would have. I had questioned, I mean, obviously, if we're not talking about two, if it's polled from the agenda, the resolution is three, and I had questions with some of the wording on the first page of the resolution, but I'm not sure whether council will question that or...
Point, point well taken, so you and Josh Ari would possibly have questions after we had the conversation?
That's kind of how I took the process, but I'm not, I don't know...
What's the, what's the consent of council?
Well, if he wants to talk about...
Number three.
It's number four in mine, I, my agenda's different.
Number four, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, it is.
If he wants to talk about number four, and we're talking about number four, because we're really not talking about number three, then, and you want to address the verbiage, spit it out, as far as I'm concerned.
Or do you want to hear what we have to say?
I'm just, I'm interested in the definition of the, the last two, whereas the city engineer paragraphs, that definition is, I'm not sure what that definition means, I don't know whether council understands that definition.
Okay, well, that's fair enough, so...
The whereas the city engineer department can effectively manage, construct, street improvement projects using traditional design-build, bid-build method in a timely and effective manner, whereas the city engineer department, existing professional services, if you read those, I'm not sure that's clear is what we're trying to say. The meetings I was involved in, they were, you were, I understood council to talk about hiring a consultant to manage that, so...
Mr. Meisner?
I think you're right, I concur with what you're saying, and I was under the understanding that the verbiage that explicitly stated that we would utilize a third, or third degree, a third-party engineering firm to design the roads, and a third-party engineering firm to, what'd you call it?
Quality control, quality assurance.
Quality control.
And evaluations.
And evaluations? Those two independent third-party things would happen, but the ultimate responsibility for overseeing the streets is still the responsibility of our city engineering department. Does that make sense? I just need to find that verbiage for you.
Next page.
It's on the next page.
And I think if you go to number two is where I was concerned, Mr. Ari. And that the city engineer shall contract with an outside qualified survey and design professionals to survey, design, and prepare plans for specifications, and issue requests for bids in the traditional manner of a design-bid-build method, and then shall administer such design-bid-build contract and project as awarded. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we're good in concept, I was just, the, the language, I thought could be improved, or, or it may be a little weak as far as trying to explain what you're talking about, but I, you know, I think we're on the same page. I, I think the last paragraph, number three on the copy I got, says the contractor and to evaluate the bids received as determined necessary. I can't imagine what evaluating you're gonna have if there's a low bid.
A low responsive bid.
A low responsive bid, yeah, so, that's really, I mean, I, you know, you know, without hearing comment, I don't know that I have any other input.
Okay, I may take the pleasure of redirect after we're done with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Ari?
Thank you, council, staff, for your time. Josh Ari, 731 Tyrellian Way. Really, I just wanted to bring up the, the issue or item, I'd submitted a letter to the city, well, I believe it was discussed last week or Monday, and the, the letter that staff did not receive, I have, I hope that council or somebody sent that to everyone and staff regarding the memo sent out. If, and if indeed the 2A design-build is dead, we, we would, it addressed that we'd like the comments rescinded, that way it kind of makes our company whole from, from some of the opinions that were in that memo.
Okay, could we have that addressed in writing back and forth between legal and us?
Sure.
So, we could get, if you don't mind, if we could go ahead and do that, and then we can go on to Resolution Number 5, because that's what we're gonna talk about, would that be satisfactory, and then let us know how it's going at another meeting?
Sure, you can do that.
Legal, legal had a statement.
Did you want me to provide what I gave to you in your... Can I make a...
Sure.
The whole process, however, each firm looks at it legally, was part of the process, so we can't unfortunately, or fortunately, erase it, it's there, it's public record. So, whether something else happens in the future, between your legal and our legal, that's another issue, but to pull a document, can't do it. The, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think there's kind of... The, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think there's kind of two issues here. As I understand it, one issue is that they're requesting that we, by a document, rescind the documents referred to in your letter. And number two, that he's asking that we remove those objectionable documents from our record. And our attorney has spoken to that issue, but I'm not sure that we've heard about the first issue.
And so I guess I would say, I think you need to have an executive session with us to address that issue. I know that Cory has had conversations with some of you about that. So I think we need to have a separate executive session, and we can take that up later.
Okay. We need, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're happy to respond in writing as to what we want, just to clear it up.
Yeah, that'd be great. We appreciate that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Any other written? Okay, so we're going to move on to four. I'm sure we're on the same number now. Number four. I'm suffering from a little bit of meeting burnout here.
Oh, blood sugar.
The Resolution Number Five, 2018, Proposed Use of Design-Bid-Build Process for the 2018 2A Street Improvement Projects. Is this where I turn over the city engineer? Or is this where, that's all I have? What was the intent of putting that on there?
Mayor, I think this reflects the direction the council requested on April the 2nd and reaffirmed at your last meeting with the amendments that were made last Monday. So I hope it truly reflects and captures everything you want to convert from the design-bill methodology to the design-bid-bill with the clear intention of hiring an independent engineering firm to do the design work and then hiring an independent firm to do quality control and quality assurance and evaluate the bids. And we would concur with John Paul Ari. It's going to be a simple evaluation because you're only looking at two things. Is the bid responsive? Does it reflect the scope of work? And was it the lowest price? You just have to match those two things up.
That was three.
Essentially, Mayor, this also reverses a standing order that was given in Resolution Five, 2017, which was for the design-build. So we need to undo that.
So that's what this redoes? It undoes that, thank you.
Unties the knot.
Okay. Now, so we're done with that. Do we have to vote on it?
Well, yes.
Okay. We're going to go for...
Can I make a modification, or suggestion for modification before we do that, so we simplify the motion?
I'll hear it.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I think generally council wanted a couple of items. One is we wanted a third party to design the street. We wanted a third party to review the bid. And we wanted a third party to oversee the construction, however you say that. And I think this addresses that, other than item three. Item three says that the city administrator and city engineer are further authorized to utilize, and I would suggest that that would say, the city administrator and the city engineer shall utilize a third party. It's just kind of like the same change I made before, that they will, in fact, use a third party versus... So it would say, city engineer shall utilize, so you're going to delete "are further authorized to" and just say "shall utilize a third party", if that verbiage makes sense.
Yeah.
So would you like to make that motion, including your verbiage?
I thought if we did it before we did the motion, we could just agree on that.
He's asking you to make the motion with that change.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, with your permission, I move that we approve Resolution Five, Series of 2018, with the modification to item number three that removes "are further authorized to", and that verbiage is replaced with "shall".
Second.
Adam seconded. Any comments, any discussion on the motion? Does everybody understand it? Okay. Would you call...
Well, I have a question for Adam. When will we start pursuing getting the build, design work done? Or how will we be attaining that?
I've already received some quotes for some of the work, so we're going to get started right away.
Good job.
Okay. Well, that was not part of the discussion that was supposed to be, but thank you. It was a good discussion. So we can discuss that after we take a roll. Please.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorito?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, are there questions you'd like to address to Mr., have you addressed them? I'm sorry.
I got it.
You got it. Anyone else have any questions?
Well, I do have a question following up from that. You say you've gotten some bids, bids from third-party designers? Or from...
Quotes from those third parties to do the work that you just directed.
Okay.
How many streets do you think you're going to be able to do under this new process, the first year?
We have to do Field Avenue and Park Avenue. So that'll be our focus. We've separated the general fund money projects, and those will be advertised this weekend for a completely separate contract. That was Centennial Park Parking and Culverin Lane.
Is it possible that we could do more streets this year?
No, we're only going to have time to do, I hope we have time to do those two. Yeah. Because one of those has to be done during the summer. Has to be done when school's out.
Oh, good grief, I think we can do more than that. But I'm not an engineer. Go ahead.
This whole Mother Nature helps us.
Adam, and I truly appreciate you sticking with this whole process. I know it's frustrating for you, and I know you've spent a lot of time in this. But, you know, I appreciate you putting your nose to the grindstone and still moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, it'll work. We're still going to deliver to the taxpayers as promised.
Right. It's just different.
I think it was, it shows a good stride by staff that be quick on their feet, redirect, and just keep this stuff moving forward. So, thank you.
And I truly appreciate that.
But then I don't understand, we said third-party, and our city engineer's doing it.
No, he's not.
He just said he put out for bids.
No, not bids for the construction. So we're getting professional services quotes to do the quality assurance, to do the survey, the design, yeah.
Okay.
I just have one more thing to say.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just hope that this reversal can encourage, will encourage more local contractors to put a bid in so that we can really focus on keeping this money local.
Okay. Anyone in council have any comments? Because I'm going to adjourn soon. We adjourn.